It has come to my attention that recently, a policy has come down that has requested or demanded that shelter personnel do not waive the owner-tenant fee. And that, by the way, is a commission policy, to waive the owner-tenant fee if necessary. So it seems to me that that's a violation of commission policy. And what's interesting is, it is not across the board. We have, I mean, five shelters, six shelters, five shelters. And some of the shelters have got the information, others have not, as I've spoken with shelter personnel. And I think we all understand the ramifications, that if you don't waive the fee, if a person turning in his pet cannot turn that animal into the shelter, we all know what the alternative is. And that is a public safety issue, as well as an issue regarding the animal. In some cases, I have been informed that shelter personnel are very much opposed to this. And they will tell the owner who says, "I cannot afford to give you the fee, the tenant fee." They'll say, "Okay, fine, we'll make it a stray." So then the stray stays for that day, plus four more days, and is not available for adoption as you're not going to head and spread. It's a problem. And then we now have a full shelter. Now, I don't know what the reasons for that policy. It is not a written policy, so I understand. Though it is indeed a policy that has come down, and I've expressed this within the mayor's office, and I'm expressing my team, and I'm hoping that you will look at your former policies and see that indeed, this commission decided that if indeed somebody turns in an animal, that if they cannot, and they say they cannot afford it, then they should ask for a donation. If they can't get the donation, you still take the animal. You don't let them go out the door. And we have some rescuers that have said, "I have seen people go out the door with a box of puppies, turned away at the desk." And thankfully, they've intervened and saved those animals, but you can't expect them to do that all the time.
A policy recently came to my attention that actually ties into what we just heard about. And that is that if somebody comes in to turn in a stray animal, and they're asked how long they've had the animal in their possession, and if they've held on to it for a certain amount of time, I believe the policy, as I was told, was 30 days, but I've seen this happen with animals that they said they've had for two weeks, then it's considered an owner surrender. Now, my concern is not whether they're asked to pay a surrender fee or not. My concern is that there is an owner out there who may be looking for their animal. If you make it an owner surrender, then that animal becomes available for adoption immediately, could get snapped up within an hour, and the owner never has a chance to find their pet. So I think that needs to be addressed. On a similar note, I found out just today that when there are disputes of ownership with an animal in the shelter, that the microchip is trumped by the city license. However, in order to get a license, you don't have to provide any proof of ownership, you don't have to ever have the animal scanned for a microchip. So if somebody could find a dog, or even steal a dog, apply for a license, the dog then is licensed to them, and as far as the shelter is concerned, they own that dog, even if there's a microchip to somebody else. And I think that's also something that needs to be addressed.
Reserve program for officers to go out and do duties for animals in the city. Currently, right now, we have about two officers on at night, didn't we, one time? From Silmar to San Pedro, huge area to cover. I'm sure we all know, we make a call to the department, it could take quite a long, long time to get any kind of response. Never mind the other duties that the officers could be doing for the department. I have raised $27,000 from neighborhood councils. Twenty-three neighborhood councils voted for the program. To date, I was stopped from doing further work. The program, we had 11 graduates that all quit. The program stopped about two years ago because the general manager had questioned the validity of the candidates from first class, which we found out later, there was no problem, but we wasted about $1,500 per person who went to training then. So my request is, is that we take this pause committee motion seriously. We have a lot of people I'm accountable to. When I went out and told this many neighborhood councils that we would do it, and I took their money. Okay? If we need candidates, we'll find the candidates. There's plenty of vets who've come back from the war, who could use new training. There's plenty of people in college, vet colleges, city colleges. We just need to target the right demographic. Facebook, Best Friends postings, I don't know what the traffic is to L.A. Animal Services website is, but that's not the way you market a program. That's not why you throw your hat over the fence, and you say, "We're going to do this." You set dates, and you say, "On this date, we're going to have this many candidates," and you find a way to do it. That's the way I've done things before. That's the way I started this. That's what I said I would bring on these many officers. And I've always made myself available to help with other ancillary things that needed to be done. If LMPD can have over 330 officers, I'm sure that we can get 50. Maybe just 25, but enough, at least to make... There's Craigslist ad we have to call, there's dog fighting we have to call, there's packs of dogs downtown L.A. We need people. I mean, I'm sure we can all agree to that. I'm here to help move the program forward. I'd like, again, if anybody has any other questions or so forth, but my request is that we put this on as an agenda item, so we can actually discuss this logically, and see how we can accomplish this. Okay? That's what I'd like to talk about. I have a copy of the neighborhood councils. I'm on the Hollywood Hills Neighborhood Council currently. And I know it's been something we've been holding off of. You can't give the money back. It goes into the general fund. So we made a promise, once you go back, it goes into the general fund, the neighborhood councils lose the money. So that's really what's going to be the problem here.
I want to bring up some concerns, that things that should have been taken care of a long time ago. I'm glad that you're taking an active role in managing this department. The website, there's no place on there for spay and neuter, first off. Best Friends is advertising Academy Awards for $14, you can get any cat. And the motto is, "Together, we can save them all." We can't save them all, as long as we're not spaying and neutering, and the department is not doing their part to stop them from coming into the shelter. We have nothing in the myriad of languages that are spoken in this city, how easy it is to translate pages on spay and neuter, on animal care, and on laws, into all of these languages, so that we can actually work at the source of this problem. And something else that's a little concerning with No Kill L.A. and "We Can Save Them All." Best Friends is in a city shelter. Ms. Barnett, every time she speaks to you about a report, will not be how well the department is doing, it's how well Best Friends is doing, how well No Kill L.A. is doing. We need to separate. Because transporting animals to Canada, to all of these various locations where we have hoarding situations every day, if you put in a Google alert for hoarding and animals, you will be appalled. Today, one for 300 animals lying on top of the dead animals in a hoarding situation, which was a rescue. These animals, we have no idea where they're going. You need to get an accurate count on how many animals are being transported out of Los Angeles, regardless of whether it's our shelter, the rescues, or Best Friends, just a number. And then you'll find out how well we're doing it actually, saving them. Are we saving them, or are we just shifting them somewhere else?
So this is something that really just makes me feel like everything else that everybody in this room does is just negated. There's an automotive business about a mile or two from here. I originally wrote to the city about eight months ago, that they were being kept in the vicinity of toxic fluids, of workdays, and things of that nature. So I did a CPR request, and I found out that the city of Los Angeles gave a pit bull breeding permit to a tire business. What the hell are you doing? You're giving a pit bull breeding permit to a tire business? But let's find out what Officer DiMasio actually did. Here's the pit bull breeding license for a male pit bull. Here's a picture of a female pit bull. So either the officer didn't see this other pit bull there, or can't tell the difference between a boy and a girl. But that's not all. The city of Los Angeles gave this tire business a chihuahua breeding license. We kill more pit bulls and chihuahuas than any other dog. I think we kill more cats than dogs. So what are we doing, giving breeding permits for pit bulls and chihuahuas to a tire business?
How much did they pay?
Close to $900 in total.
That's why.
And that's why, exactly right. But that's not all. Two pit bulls. Here's a Labrador. Here's a second black chihuahua. Can Officer DiMasio not tell between one and two? The business has at least six dogs. Four have been licensed, two have been licensed to breed. And so when we sit here and we talk about all these other issues, and they're being killed left and right, day after day, you've got to call in the officers to find out what the hell they're doing. How can we have double the limit, at least six dogs, when there's a limit of three, we're issuing them breeder's license? Let's get real, find out what the hell's going on with this. You know, Brenda's a breeder, she doesn't believe in spay and neuter. She believes that you can have, you know, show dogs, breeders, living in harmony with rescues, and there's room for everybody. But I'd like to know why we're giving a tire business with lousy conditions. Automotive fluid trickling down right here. What does the humanitarian officer not see about toxic fluids? And tires being... Come on, where's her water bill? There's no protection. So you guys have to get down to... And I'm sorry, I know it's trial by fire, you're all brand new for the most part. I'm going to email this to you personally, outside of the city, because the problem is, when we've reported things like this in the past, officers, not all of them, but some of them, and we have proof of this, they retaliate by telling the people who are reporting who reported them. And we have documentation of that. So if you wonder where the anger, where the steam comes from for people, it's bread and butter issues like this. You're allowing breeding. This man could have had these dogs licensed for $20 per.
Time, man.
He paid close to $1,000, no, $900. And we've got to get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
It's recently come to my attention, as I filed an appeal from a dangerous dog hearing from a decision that the dog is vicious. I was trying to get some answers on when the appeal was going to happen. I have tonight gotten some answers. This dog has been locked up since September. The hearing was not held until October, it was held within the 30 days. The decision wasn't rendered and served until December 5th, which already violates the time period. I was being told by the department for a long time, that, for about a month and a half, that in order to have an appeal, there are prerequisites for a valid appeal. That is actually not in the code at all. There is nothing, Mr. Zapp, I think you will agree, in 53.18.5 subsection Q, does not have anything in there about prerequisites. And clearly, if you're going to have an appeals process, you either have one or you don't, but you can't make it conditional, because that does implicate due process rights. And for better or worse, deprivation of property does implicate the Constitution and due process rights. And there are a number of concerns I have about, about a lot of these procedures, that have come to light as I started to look at more of this. There are a lot of things that are very questionable under the Constitution that are being done with regard to these appeals, and with regard to the hearings at all. A lot of it is just time limits. You know, a lot of these statutes don't say exactly how long from the time a dog is locked up until you have a hearing. And just because there's no time in there, there are a lot of cases that spell that out, that say, you know, you can't have these unreasonable delays. The answer I've been given, that if, by Mr. LaSalle, when I complained about due process violations in another case, was if your client doesn't like it, she can sue the city for a writ. Which I don't think is a very reasonable solution, because a lot of this is avoidable. A lot of it is avoidable just by playing by the rules, and by considering due process, you know, people's rights. There's all kinds of things in here, you know, that, you know, they talk about, on appeal, you can only bring up things that were brought up, raised in the appeal application. But what if you don't have enough information? Because you don't have the information, you have 15 days from the time a decision is rendered and sent, which you may not get it for five days. So then you have 10 days, and you don't even know what information is in there necessarily to put in the application. So if you can't bring up something that's in the application, you know, what do you do about other situations? It says that an appeal is only going to be based on the hearing, the record in front of the hearing examiner. What about when the recording of the hearing mysteriously gets erased? And there is no record, really, because the recording that the city did is gone. What about when the officer lies? Is that considered new evidence? It's really not clear. And these are all things that need to be considered in an appeal, regardless of what all of this stuff says, if you want to give, you know, real appeals.
The four commissioners faces, I don't recognize. The other four people know me. I've been doing animal law since '92. And I've done many, 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 a lot of many, dangerous dog and barking dog cases. The issue I want to take up, and I'll be as quick as possible to make it happen within three minutes, but your rules do say that I can get consent from the chair to go an extra minute by minute, and would ask, okay. But here are the ones, it's a copy for each... A person files the request form for an appeal. And what happens is, and I'm sorry, I have to point the finger at you, Mr. Zapp, but Mr. Zapp has assumed or been given the job of screening these things. Now, if there's a defective one that doesn't comply with the minimum required of the ordinance, or it's over 15 days old, that's it, that's the end of your case. But coincidentally, I did a case where I did the hearing, and then the client didn't want me to do the appeal. They said they're going to come in pro per to do the appeal. But I did the appeal notice for them. And in my 22 years of doing this, nobody has ever rejected or denied my appeal notice. So part of that package I gave you is a sample from that case of the appeal notice, and also Mr. Zapp's response to it. So what you have is, and I think maybe I could do this in the remaining time, but I've given you all the ordinances, I believe, applied. But what you have here is, one of the issues under 53.18.5 are, indicates that if you don't like the decision, you can do an appeal to the Board of Commissioners. That means have the whole board, the quorum of the board, make a decision, not just one person. Just throw your case out and say it's denied. The next point is, and Ms. Tasha brought up the point, but I think it's a really big point. And I think Mr. Poole would acknowledge this. I don't believe there's any way in the world to get a copy of the hearing and all of the documents that were submitted at the hearing within the 15 days it takes. So for example, an attorney gets a case, and says, "Hey, I'm on the case, give me the record, give me the tape, I mean disc." It takes more than 15 days. So you can't put it out within a timely time period here. Also, what's ended up happening, though, is that the department has turned the mechanics of a request appeal form from...
Time, yeah.
I'd like to...
You can go on.
Thank you. Changed it from a notice of grounds or reasons into the requirement that the appeal notice be a trial brief, meaning the argument. And the only thing that you can do, especially if you didn't participate in the case, is interview people, look at the records that they have, and see what the issues are. In that one particular case, and again, I'm not here to argue that case should be reopened. I wasn't hired to follow through. But I'm saying I raised 13 issues that I felt were valid, and the commissioner just summarily denied it. And apparently, the commissioner reviewed the record and made his own decision. But what really bothers me about that is, the appeal is supposed to be to the commission, not just one person to say, "I have authority to wipe out the claim." On appeal. So I'm saying that these things shouldn't happen. If they're beyond 15 days, or if they just don't put any grounds at all, that should be it. The last point I want to make on it, but again, I ask you to read carefully what I've given there. But in your own ranks, it points out, telling you that, you know, it's going to either be a failure of the evidence, you know, to support the decision, or the conduct is not in accordance with the rules. But it also says there that "The grounds or reasons stated on the appeal form by the appellant will be the only grounds or reasons considered." And to me, what that's saying is, you submit the appeal form, and you say, "Here's going to be my grounds." But you argue it when you get here, or my habit for 22 years has been, when I get the record, after I do the notice for the person, I get the record, and I put together what I call an argument, which will be a trial brief. Now, the last thing I'd like to say is this. I have submitted two letters. One from a former commissioner, Teri Masalero, who was on the commission for two years. She gave me a three-page letter that you have here, saying that she can't, in effect, believe what's going on, that it shouldn't be that way, that these appeals should be heard if you put out the grounds. And then I also have given a letter from another attorney, Shannon Keith, who has done many of these dangerous dog or barking dog cases for years, and she's very upset with the process, too. So the point is, I would like you to change this from a grounds, not change it, from just giving grounds, like saying, "This is the issues I'm going to raise," and then let the argument happen either in written form or at the time of the appeal.
I'm Laura Beth Heisen, I was a commissioner of the board some time ago, chair of the city's speaking advisory committee, founder and director and officer of two major organizations. First thing I want to say is, I sent some comments to President Zapp concerning the issue tonight. I wasn't able to email comments to the others of you, because your email addresses are not available. This whole thing is about public access, and many people cannot attend commission meetings. So I think it would be a really good idea if you could all provide your email addresses to the public, so that you can actually find out what the public thinks about things that are going on. Many of the people don't even come anymore, because they kind of gave up. But if they could email you, you could still find out what's going on. So I think that would be a great idea. I want to talk about Public Record Act requests. And I know that Mr. Poole works really hard on those things and tries to get them done, but he's only one person, there are many of them. Unfortunately, the California law doesn't provide an exception for, we didn't assign enough people to comply. I've got Public Record Act requests outstanding for years. Nobody responds to them. And that's a violation of California law that the city really shouldn't be doing. So I think one thing for your agenda would be, show us how you're complying on time, and what are you going to do to make sure that you do. I want to give one example of Public Record Act request that hasn't been complied with. I started out asking in 2010, where do you report transports? That recently became, where do you report transfers to Best Friends? I still don't get an answer to that. I'll tell you why I'm not getting an answer to it. It's not because Mr. Poole is overworked, I think it's because of this. Adoptions in 2013 compared to the year before Brenda Barnett started are actually up by 3,175, which sounds really good. The thing is, transfers to Best Friends are about 5,000 a year. When animals are transferred from the Los Angeles City Shelter cage to a Best Friends cage, they're not adopted. They don't have a home. They're still impounded animals. In fact, Best Friends doesn't even adopt them, almost haven't. They transfer them to yet another shelter cage in some other city or state or country, so that maybe they'll get adopted there. These are not animals that got adopted by L.A. Animal Services. Yet, Brenda reports them as public adoptions in the L.A. Animal Services statistics, 5,000 of them. She's basically lying, and that's the only word that can be used, lying about between 15 and 20% of public adoptions that she's reporting to you, to the public, to the mayor. This is a lie. And this is what pillars was saying, that you have to separate what's going on at Best Friends from what's going on at L.A. Animal Services. They are not the same. And whatever good things Best Friends is doing, that doesn't mean that Brenda should get credit for it, because Brenda has a job, she's getting $200,000 plus a year, she should be doing something for it, not relying on Best Friends and others to do her work for her. So Brenda's job is to actually solve some problems that other people and organizations are not solving. Do I have another minute?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. The website, I want to reiterate, used to have a big thing about spay and neuter, because that was the city's priority before Brenda started. It used to be bilingual. Brenda removed the Spanish language translation of the website. Pit bull breeding, bad enough to issue a breeding permit, as Dan said, but why are we issuing a breeding permit for any pit bull breeding, when we're killing as many as we are and doing nothing about it? Because Best Friends is...
Yeah!
And we're taking so few, which means it depends on Brenda, and she's not doing it, so we shouldn't be breeding any of them. I'm kind of curious what a Public Record Act request for whatever Brenda is doing on her instrument over there would show, because I suspect she's not taking notes, I think she's just not paying attention to what's going on, and she's not hearing what the public has to say. So I hope you are listening, because many people are very dissatisfied, and so it's kind of up to you to help us and help the animals. Thank you so much.
The Rescue Animal MP3 Project, I don't know if anybody's ever heard of it, but it's a service that supplies free music to animal shelters. It's a, there's a track record of this music being used in various shelters, and it helps to create a calmer atmosphere for the animals. So that's one issue. Another issue is owner surrenders. A lot of times when they come in, they are scared to death. They go from being in a nice home, in a bed, to being thrown into a cage. And I wonder if there's anything that we can do for the owner surrenders to, you know, have them have like a little decompression session, or, you know, I know this is a city shelter, they can't, you know, go have a spa, or whatever, but to just have somebody there to give them some comfort, rather than to just take them and just throw them in the cage. I think there should be some kind of program with volunteers or something that helps to, you know, calm the owner surrenders. The other question that I have is, I don't know what the law is, I don't understand why we can just adopt animals out to anybody. Why there can't be any kind of, you know, a little bit of selectivity? Because there's some people that obviously, you know, they're, like some people, they'll turn an old animal into the shelter, and then they'll go walking around the shelter and want to adopt a young animal. And I just think that that, I think that when somebody turns an animal in like that, they shouldn't be allowed to turn around and adopt an animal again.
Seen quite a few commissioners and GMs in my time here in L.A. It's kind of like a musical chairs. Sorry you all get dismissed by email without even a phone call. Sorry, Jim Genzwald and Lisa McCurdy, thank you for your time. I just want to put that on the record. Shame on you for getting rid of Kathy Reardon, the brainstorm. Ever shame. And by the way, Jim Genzwald was an oral surgeon, a very esteemed oral surgeon. He found out through Lisa, through email, "Hey, did you get sacked?" Yeah, I got sacked. Classy. So I hope you last longer, but don't get too comfortable, because there's a big eject button from the mayor's office, and they're all connected, you know, it's all politics. We're just here for the animals, that's all we do. We're broke, we're stressed, we're exhausted, we're crying, we're freaked out, and we spend our whole weekends on our ass begging for homes. That's what we do. We're not rich, we don't make money from this, we don't cherry pick, and we don't have like some big funding in the background, just to get to know us. Okay? About the music, just for what Perry O said, at North Central, there was a very nice volunteer that brought in her own boombox to help sue the animals, and she was told by the ACT to not play the music, that it was not allowed. Just say no. Dan, regarding his pictures, I can tell you, and I will share pictures with you, Harbor Animal Control went out to a homeless lady that's living in an alley, someone had taken pictures. She has over four dogs, they're living in crates, she's living in a shopping cart, and she was not sighted, and none of the animals were, she was not told to spay and neuter anybody, nor was she asked the license. They just said, "Oh, they have food and water, that's fine." So you wonder where all these animals are coming from. I am on foot patrol at the old SLA neighborhood, which is Exposition and 12th, 11th, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6. You'll find me there every night. I feed the animal, the cats that I've trapped and neutered, there are still more coming, because people still go to the old location, because the banners are still up. No one's bothered to take them down, so everyone thinks, the dumbasses think that there's still a shelter there. So they tie up the dogs, and they leave boxes, and I'm constantly calling SLA, new location, to come pick up animals. I pick up and fix the ones that I have. But I just want to tell you that in that just square area, just that square area where the shelter existed for a very long time, you go down every alley, every animal is not fixed, every single one of them, because I see them through the fences. There's a German shepherd that I'm going to report, starving and so emaciated, it was squeezing through the bars and coming out and taking my cat food at night, but then the loving owners decided to board up the back fence, so she couldn't get out to get extra food. That's the micro that I deal with every day. So I don't know where all this scrutiny of New Hope, and all this penny-ante garbage, it's like you all don't seem to get it. You know, our streets are overrun with unfixed animals. And when I was out trying to make fun, make friends with this little chihuahua, I get this person screaming at me, "What are you doing with my dog?" I'm like, "Well, I'm about to call Animal Control to report you for an unneutered animal."
I'm a volunteer, often on, over the last 15 years or so. Firstly, I want to thank Christine Carr. I'm glad she's still here. She is one of the best supervisors at the shelter. If not for her, Andrew and I would not have been given permission to work with a couple of dogs who were deemed aggressive when they first came in. And since we were able to work with these dogs, both were adopted when they went out to a mobile pet adoption, or they calmed down and were taken by Best Friends and were adopted within a week. So I think it's very important that staff tries to communicate with the volunteers who are here regularly, getting to know the dogs, and cats for that matter, and trusting us a little bit. I don't think any one of us is going to endanger ourselves by going into a dog that was deemed aggressive the day it was brought in. the day it was brought in. And these dogs need time to settle down and they need to be able to trust somebody. They do not do reevaluations on the dogs that were brought in and deemed aggressive or have behavioral's. So those dogs could be here for months. They don't get fixed unless Christine is here. Generally, those dogs will not get out for walks or for any kind of playtime. The other thing that I've been asking for for years is statistics on animals that are found and brought into the shelters and the owners come in looking for them and cannot afford to get them back out because of the fees that are charged. I've paid for the redemption fee for a homeless couple whose pet was picked up by the police department while she was in a 7-Eleven getting a drink. And she could not afford to get her dog out that she'd had for the entire life. If it's about the pet being fixed or neutered, do it. You're going to do it anyway eventually if the dog gets adopted. But if these people want their dogs back, at least let them have a chance to get their dogs back. That's all their family that they know. So I'd like to know the statistics of the dogs that have to remain in here and be subjected to kennel life and possibly getting sick and whatever when they could have possibly gone out a day or two later back to the owners, but they just couldn't afford it. There was some concern about the adoptions this Sunday at the South L.A. Shelter that somebody paid the adoption fees for everybody to come in and get a free animal. And the staff and the volunteers, or the volunteers, I should say, were beside themselves. One more second, one more second.
Yeah, please.
It's one thing to offer this kind of service for people who want to have a pet. But at least when they're there, have a counselor on hand, pass out educational materials. Some of these people do not know what it takes to have a pet. They cannot afford the vet fees. They cannot afford grooming fees. We need to educate more than anything else. We need to get into the schools. And we need somebody in each of the shelters. We need an intervention program at this shelter and every other shelter like they have to greet people and let them know that there are options, that they don't have to turn in an animal, that there could be funding to help an animal with medical treatment. We need to do this for the animals.
I want to talk about the RAC program that Paul brought up. Fortunately or unfortunately, I'm one of the people that were in the class of 2011 as well. Yes, the RAC program. He better mention that 11 people quit. There were 12, there were 12 guardians from that class and about five or six of them quit. There's still a few of us. And just so you know, the 5th of February this year awaits for firearms requalification. I've gone to four of those at the L.A.P.D. with training center. I'm sure the city pays for that, but I've not been used. We've not been used since a year and a half, two. Because when the program started, we were told all of a sudden, you can't volunteer no more. We went to training for six months. We volunteered at that time. After work, we go to the mission shelter. This is now owned by Bestman. We go over there and we train on our own time by money collected by volunteers. Put together program one. We had 12 guardians and we were told there would be a second class. The second class never happened. And the people that went to the training, people that went to, people that went to the training were told you cannot volunteer anymore. What I want to know, did this come from the, did this come from City Council? Did it come from the commissioner or did it come from, from the Department of Management? Because we were given a lot of excuses. We were told, well, people were volunteering on city time. That is a lie. That would be illegal because our supervisors would not allow us to leave before 5:00. So there's no way we could do volunteer hours during city time. So if that was the reason why the program was stopped, it was a lie. Other than that, there's no reason. Because now people are saying, like, okay, they go to people's properties and the officers do not do the job. Couple of days ago, we had one officer in the morning. It wasn't at night, it wasn't regular shift, in the morning. He had to go out into field. I had to catch his calls. And one of the calls that I called was somebody that was calling for the fifth time about a complaint they made in December. There hasn't been an investigation on that particular, that particular call, it's been almost two months. And there are people that actually want to do the job. We've been trained. I can do everything that every officer do. And just in the shelter alone, we have four of us that are RACOs. We can help the officers. There's one person doing the job of five or six people. That's all I have to say. There are RACOs, there are people that know the job and are willing to do the job for free. Please use them.
East Valley Shelter volunteer for quite a while. I do mobiles, I do, in the trenches of the shelter here. A couple of things. It's my concern is, we've been fortunately low, cats, dogs. It's been a great few months since, like, before Thanksgiving, even our cat room, we've been, you know, up to 20-plus cages empty. They have five, six cats available for adoption. I mean, that's, and it's not just been a week, it's been for a while now. My question is, the transfer system, transferring animals from South Los Angeles from maybe North Central, that we could use them in our shelters and West L.A. shelters. I think that there needs to be some sort of better system or requirement that when there are cages available, not obviously filling all the cages. We need room for cages for animals coming in. But why aren't we having more transfers? We don't have people to drive, we don't have the staff. We have volunteers that are willing to drive the trucks. There's no training program for the driving the trucks. There are few that do do the mobiles, that are trained, that could transfer. It doesn't need to be shelter staff. So I would just like to bring up that transferring animals from our heavier shelters that are in lesser neighborhoods, that these animals are possibly getting put down, that could have been over here, that could have been at one of our mobiles, it could be at West L.A. And also, I don't know the laws or why. But like L.A. County, I'm not sure why we can't even implement some sort of program where we can take a truckload of Walden Park and bring them to West L.A. I know this Sunday, we have a mobile at West L.A. and South L.A. is coming. And instead of our truck going, leftovers going to best friends, they're going to West L.A. Shelter because they simply don't have enough animals and they have adopters. So if there's any way that we can work with L.A. County as well who are overwhelmed situations, if you've ever been to one of their shelters and try and do, you know, integrate some sort of transfer program,